Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. It is actually Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. It's now 6:00 PM. We're meeting in the Rockingham Town Hall Lower Theater Meeting Room, or there's a link for the Zoom meeting above. We first need to meet as the Rockingham Board of Liquor Commissioners. We have five items on the agenda, or five applications.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the liquor licenses as follows.
Peter, can you please turn on your mic or push it toward you?
How's that?
Way better.
I'll repeat. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the following liquor licenses. As noted, Lee Size Market Incorporated Second Class Liquor, Apple Green New England Second Class Liquor License, JW Sandry, Inc., Second Class Liquor License, Bell Falls Country Club, Inc., Third Class and Outside Consumption Liquor License, Vermont Country Store, Inc., Second Class Liquor License.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the five stated liquor licenses. Any questions? Anybody know what's Apple Green New England?
I think that's one of a couple, it used to be Cumberland Farms, I think. There's a whole parcel of stuff in the information, or change the name and filing, I think.
Okay, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, I'll pass. Okay, thank you very much. I'd like, I'd now like to call the meeting to order. We need to approve the minutes, the January 19th, 2021, and the January 21st, 2021, uh, meeting minutes.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
January 11th, 2021, meeting minutes were never approved. Uh, we ought to add those in here. That was a special meeting.
Wait, okay. Can we do that now?
You can do it now and ratify it at another meeting, or I can add those to your next meeting.
Well, the 19th and 21st are on the agenda. You want to do those? So we don't, we wouldn't have to ratify those if we put them all together? Okay, so we need to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 19th, and 21st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from January 11th, 19th, and 21st. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? Other comments on items that are not on the agenda, allow three minutes per person.
Scott, is it a good time now?
That's great, Chuck. I'm, I think just about two more minutes, we'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
Any, any public comments, Shannon?
None on Zoom.
Okay, none here? You had none? Managers' report.
Thank you. We were going to work on, uh, we wanted to get you some updated information, and Chuck is, uh, going to give us a video update as to some of the repairs that have gone on inside the clock tower. So I think, Shannon, if, if we can, we can give the, um, feed to Chuck, I think then he can work from there.
Cool.
So right now, I'm up in the clock tower, and, um, the face that you're looking at is the west side. There's a bullet hole that, um, somebody from the church was shooting at the clock tower many years ago. So you can see where that damage is still there. Um, this space, right now, we've all noticed that the clock tower has gotten dark over the last couple of months. Uh, that's no surprise that some of these bulbs have been burning out. And since they were, um, put in around the same time, about 20 years ago, they are burning out within the same timeframe. When we got up here, I'm gonna move around, try to move around slowly. This is down. Um, that's a long way down. So there's not a whole lot up here, but you can see where these faces, the Jones Brothers, um, I can't hardly recognize the space. It's been cleaned up so much. They took bags and bags of, uh, broken mortar and dust, cobwebs, you name it. Um, this place was in bad shape. The whites, now I'm gonna move up, so you could point up. So this is such a classic Yankee ingenuity here. That's where the weather vane is and everything. But they, they whitewalled, whitewashed the brick. And then these bulbs right here, they're very simple. There's not a whole lot to it. Uh, these were ceiling fixtures that you can see were mounted on the side of the wall. So right now, what we're looking at is LED fixtures that would give us a, the same kind of illumination. We have Walter Wallace, our CLG Coordinator, looking into the historic color of what this, um, clock tower would have looked like. It's about 2,700 Kelvin color temperature. So we're gonna try to match that with LEDs. The LEDs we're looking at right now, and I'm gonna pivot a little bit more, they are, um, the amount of choices, now this is the south side. You can see where, uh, these have all been cleaned up, but these bulbs, uh, they're not replaced. But we're getting that kind of illumination just off of two fluorescent bulbs, um, which is pretty impressive. But the LEDs, their options are infinite. So, uh, we'd have 16 million colors. If you wanted to have green during St. Patty's Day, you could, you could, uh, turn the colors green in here. That whatever your choices would want, whatever you would want to do would be an option. And that just comes stock with the LED. That's just a, it's not a special feature. It's just part of purchasing the LED lights. So I guess I'll ask, uh, answer questions, but many thanks to the Jones Brothers. This is not extremely easy getting up here. And they had a lot of work to do to clean this up. They've done what they can. This is the east side, so this is the side facing the Connecticut River. You just see how clean everything is. And I will give Scott some photos that you can download of the original condition, but it was not good at all. We can see, if I zoom in closer here, long-term, that's the iron frame. You see that rust? Long-term, we're gonna have to have a grant, and Walter and Gary are looking up, uh, funding options to see if we can get in here and do a full restoration. So our cleanup, that'll satisfy us for a little while, but long-term, we're gonna wanna see, really, this is the north side. Everybody can see this, where all that rust. So we have to pull those glasses, and this is half-inch thick glass, and then just restore that iron frame.
You have to get on the outside to pull the clock hands free? Or could you take one of those, those shaped pieces off? Okay.
All this is interior.
Okay, right, but, um, to get the big round piece of glass. So you must be able to reach through one of those.
That's right.
And then...
Most of the work appears that you could do on the interior. Doesn't look like there's a lot of exterior, but there's gonna be an order of operations that they need to do.
Yep. And how is the thing, can you zoom in on, just, it's fascinating to me. The, uh, what looks like a turnbuckle thing that holds the face to the inside of the brick shelf? There's like, um, I don't know, 20 of them all around, the metal, those things. Those are in good shape? That's what holds?
Yes. And it's not very substantial. I've never seen anything like this. I'm surprised that it's able to hold up like this. But yes, there are, they go around, the brickwork, everything is in extraordinarily good shape. But that's all it takes. That's all that they use to secure all that glass. And this glass is extremely heavy and thick.
Now, how about that planking, Chuck? Is that something that ought to be looked at? For, to make sure that it's either replaced or sturdy enough to hold people walking around on that up there?
Uh, that's right. Um, we did have Jones Brothers look at it. They, it's, it's, it's sturdy enough right now. It bends, so I, I don't know if I'd want to be a heavy guy up here, but, um, it's a good shape.
I didn't want it on going up, so. Yeah.
Mr. Pepper, you're gonna know it. You'll be singing soprano for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't notice it on my way in today. I look at it almost every day, but, so it's all lit up right now.
That's right. And we have much more to do. Uh, we're gonna see the lighting changes. Uh, I'm hoping to get some specs to Scott, and then within the next week. There's, um, there's just a lot of research to do. The typical lighting that you would see for a clock tower like this, it's 10 to 15 grand. That's not something we need, primarily because of the whitewashing and everything. All we need to do is match the illumination of these existing fluorescent, um, bulbs.
Let me ask you, though. You were talking that chameleon lighting type. You know, you could light it up green one day for Irish, for the St. Patricks, or multiple colors, or purple.
Purple for alumni.
Um, yes.
So what's the cost of something like that? I, any idea?
It's within the, it's just standard fixtures. We're looking at what, right now, um, I've recruited Efficiency Vermont to help me out, because they have lighting engineers.
Yeah.
We're looking at Philips Hue Technology.
Okay.
And based on that, we're, we're probably about 160 a fixture. And you got two fixtures per side, four sides. And that, what would be nice, is that could be changed, um, using somebody's phone, a mobile technology. So we don't have to scarf up here every time we want to change the lights.
I, I would just mention that when you're looking at LED, everyone thinks, okay, that's pretty conservative, we can save some energy. But I, my suggestion would be that you'd go with the maximum amount of wattage that you can get.
Will do.
Well, if they were on a dimmer thing, because you want, you want to ultimately match what they had.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just, yeah, I understand that. I'm just, and you can, the, the, uh, I don't know, not the frequency, but the color that he was mentioning, the 2,600, um, is more towards a, correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, but more towards a, not a white, but towards a kind of a mediocre, ye, green.
It's a warm light, yes. Scott said it well. And ultimately, that's one of the reasons why we want to have some flexibility if we want to make the lights warmer and that looks better.
Right.
Imagine we're all downstairs, um, somebody has a phone, and we're just programming the lights so they look the best. And, um, it's after a meeting. That's the kind of flexibility we need.
Yep. Chuck, what's that rod that goes from that, uh, back area to the clock base? Is that the mechanism that turns the hands?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
What, for daylight savings, what's that consist of, Chuck? Have we figured that out?
Uh, we have not. We've, uh, we're trying to find how, so I've got to program it on daylight savings. It's completely manual. What we're trying to figure out right now is how these lights turn on. And we don't have an answer to that yet. It's gotta be a photo cell or a timer somewhere.
Wow.
Um, I did talk to the clock tower folks. Our, our equipment is circa 93. So if Gary Fox and Walter, who, uh, those are two wizards, if they find funding, um, I want to have a quote to see what it would cost to upgrade our system so that it just automatically goes on daylight savings.
Right. Good thought.
So...
Thank you so much for letting me be able to show you this.
How do you, how do you gain access to the inside of that, Chuck? Where the gears are, where the, uh, the motor, the...
Maybe we shouldn't disclose that in public.
No, 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 I'm not. You'd have to get to where he is, but inside there to turn, to change the clock. Sometimes one side will be 20 minutes slower.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, they all...
Oh, the gearing. So we haven't touched the gearing yet. That's, um, that's in the dark right now. Um, so we have an electronic device that's in the development office. The gears are inside this, this box right here.
So it's...
So that's all manual, and... The last person that figured it out, who was Pepper, he had the acumen to tweak with it and fool with it until he got it right.
That's great. Thanks a lot, Chuck. Great update. We'll bring you some snacks, and you just stay up there.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck. Watch your step.
Be down quick, any thanks.
All right, anything else? Got from your report?
A couple of brief updates. I didn't see, I don't know if Sarah Lang was on our, was, was in the, uh, one of the boxes.
Hi, Adam Granold with the BDCC is here. Good evening.
Oh, hello, Adam. Okay, so were you gonna, uh, BDCC had asked if they could just take a few minutes and give us some updates. I know, um, they're working with us on some IDA projects, and they're always working on Brownsfields, area-wide plans, career development workforce. So appreciate, uh, Adam, that you're here. And, um, go ahead and give us a couple of updates. That'd be great.
Great. Well, I've got with me, uh, my colleagues, Kristi Beatty, who is the P3 Coordinator, who's working in all four Wyndham County High Schools. And then, uh, RT Brown, who is our Head Instigator, uh, and business, uh, support individual who works with both, uh, small, medium, or merging, uh, and folks who are looking to succeed out of their existing business. Um, but first, I just want to thank, uh, the board, uh, for, uh, having us here tonight, for your continued engagement over the years. Uh, you know, you folks have really been receptive and eager to hear about what we're doing, to partner with us, support us. Um, and then, secondly, just to thank you for, for having us on what is by far the most interesting SLIC Board meeting of the year. That was great. That totally was really something else. Uh, not something you get to see in, in every community, and, and that's, I share, um, the fascination with how that all works. So thank you for that. Um, you know, really what I just wanted to do briefly before I turn it over to, to Kristi and in RT is, uh, again, thank you for your past investment. You know, this past year with COVID, uh, we really had to, of course, like everyone, um, react quickly. Uh, we were able to convene calls, uh, across Wyndham County with our municipal, uh, leaders, uh, bringing in the federal delegation representatives and, uh, representatives from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, along with other, uh, with other state representatives from agencies and departments. And we really found that the participants, um, were, were engaged and really felt that time as of great value in connecting to programs, resources, uh, and the different, uh, developments that were just moving so quickly. Um, one of the other things that we did was hold, uh, weekly or, or bi-weekly calls for entrepreneurs to learn how to access the programs. And through that work, what we realized at the end, as we came out, is, uh, Wyndham County received, uh, the second-most amount of, of federal and state investment, uh, than, uh, any other county in the state. Uh, and that was really, we believe, from the great work of the partners who were involved in helping get the word out about those programs, helping the businesses connect to those programs, and ensuring that those dollars, uh, helped land here. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll just make sure we have time for questions and, and introduce Kristi Beatty, who again is our P3 Coordinator, working in all four Wyndham County High Schools.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us, uh, tonight. I, uh, coordinate the Pipelines and Pathways Program. Um, and we've been having some pretty great successes despite the setbacks of COVID and not being able to actually be in the schools. Um, we've done a, a lot of pivots from last year's content, which was taking, uh, students on work site tours, um, going into the classrooms to teach resume classes and soft skills training. Um, and now we're doing it online. So, uh, we're doing some, uh, career spotlights that we have developed with the guidance team. Um, and they're being offered to every, uh, content teacher at the high school. Um, our most recent success was a STEM, uh, career spotlight. We invited, uh, several high-level folks from Brattleboro Memorial Hospital to come in and speak with the anatomy and physiology students. Um, so that was a, a huge success. The kids were very receptive, very, um, very engaged, which was nice. And we have another one that's scheduled soon, um, for a, uh, a social studies class. I think it's called Human, Human, I can't remember exactly what the focus is, but it's, it's, uh, social studies and related to, um, she wants to have folks come in from agriculture, from the legislature. Um, and really, what we're trying to do is just connect students to, um, jobs in the area and let them know that, you know, if they want to make a life here, uh, they can head directly into the workforce, um, and, and work for some really fantastic employers, but that they can also go off to college and come back knowing that there are some quality positions here for them as well. So, um, we're having some successes right now. Uh, we also are developing with the, the guidance team a, um, a course called Flexible Pathways to Post-Secondary Success. Um, we're hoping that next year, that will be a required course for all seniors. Um, and it teaches, uh, kids some of the soft skills that employers and college recruiters have identified, um, as needing a boost, um, after they graduate from high school. So, uh, we do interviews, mock interviews. And with that, students will actually be offered a, uh, informational interview that could lead to real employment, um, and a Wyndham Work Ready Scholarship. So we're working on that right now. We're developing a, uh, a virtual, uh, model, but hoping that we won't have to utilize it and that we'll be able to be back in the classroom soon. So things are going well. So thanks for having us.
Great. Uh, RT, are you, there, there you are.
Yeah, okay. Hi, it's good to see everyone tonight. Um, I'll keep my comments brief, but I just want to build on, um, some of the points that Adam made related to, to the business, uh, um, resources that we provided to, to the region and to, to the town. Um, we, Adam mentioned that we facilitated, uh, a bi-weekly, bi-monthly, oh, sorry, a bi-weekly, uh, webinar series. We've done more than 18 of those, and those continue, uh, to happen, um, twice a month. Uh, the next one is, um, this Thursday at 2:00. Um, 22 Rockingham businesses or nonprofits received, um, BDCC liaison report, uh, support. Um, three Rockingham businesses were part of a, a program that we helped to administer, which was the Vermont Restart Technical Assistance Program. Um, you know, Adam mentioned that Wyndham, the Wyndham region was the second highest, um, in terms of federal funding. 73 Rockingham businesses received 2.4 million in the Paycheck Protection Program. And, you know, get, going back to, to the, the webinar series, that's what it was all about. We were really trying to make sure that businesses understood what they had to do to access, uh, either the, the Paycheck Protection Program or the IELT program, or any of the Vermont, um, COVID recovery programs. Um, shifting a little bit away from the business support that I happen to focus on, um, another one of our programs is what we call the Community Facilities Support Program. And, um, last year, we worked with BFADC to help support financially a feasibility study project. We also worked with the, um, Bell's Falls, uh, project that helps support, or, um, a, um, program, um, with some outside counsel. Um, and I've been in, um, active discussion. Uh, my internet might be a little funky. I've been in with some act discussion with, uh, the Rockingham Area Services Organization, um, to help support them with also another feasibility study. Um, so with, I'm gonna stop. I fear my, my internet may be not so good. So, um, I'm hoping you are able to hear, hear, hear my comments.
So there's one other program I did want to just highlight, which is, uh, one that's, uh, going on, uh, right now, um, which is the Incremental Development Alliance, uh, in partnership with the town. Um, this is a great opportunity for communities to understand their current zoning and see if there's ways in which they can encourage, uh, development within their area that meets their, their zoning objectives, um, their, uh, strategic planning for the economy. Uh, and it's often what we find, uh, in Vermont and across the country, is so many of these rules are, are a bit of a holdover from a different time. Um, and taking a fresh look at that can really invigorate the, the development within the region. Um, so with that, I think I'll pause and see if there's any questions, or, uh, again, thank you for your time.
That's great. Adam, could you just touch a little bit on the area-wide plan and some of the Brownsfield work that you guys are also supporting or doing as well?
Sure. A, a lot of the work, um, on the Brown Fields is led by our, uh, sister entity, if you will, which is the Wyndham Regional Commission. Um, so BDCC, uh, currently has, uh, a Brown Fields project through EPA funding that we're running in Bratterboro. So that's a project-specific funding source. Um, but typically, most of the area-wide assessment is, uh, conducted through the Wyndham Regional Commission. And then I sit on that board, as do many others, or on that committee, I should say. Uh, and then we work in collaboration to get the projects developed.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you. Appreciate all the updates.
RT, thanks.
Anything else, Scott?
Just one other, uh, one other... Real quick, um, we got an update from VT Trans about what we're going to be eligible for, for our Municipal Road Granton Aid Program for 2021. So for next year, um, it's a little bit more than what they had, uh, programmed for the prior year. So it'll be 31,000 from VT Trans. We'll have a 20% local match requirement, so 7750. So 38,750 will be available for specific projects. And we're working with them now on the projects that'll be eligible, and we'll report back to you as we get closer to the spring and get closer to actually starting to do some of that work. So that program's ongoing, and there's no shortage of places that need improvements and ditches and culverts and all the drainage-related issues that are also impacting roads. So we'll keep you in that loop as we go forward.
Yeah, I think it was interesting, um, I think it was 60 minutes from the program that I was watching the other day on Sunday. Mentioned all the, uh, federal dollars that go for Vermont, that are paid in taxes that we actually receive back for every dollar that's sent out, a buck 55 in federal funds to the state of Vermont in some form or fashion. And that was actually more than, uh, any of the other New England states when I looked at the stats.
Have senior senators.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. We'll move on to the agenda now. Item, item number one, uh, certificate of highway mileage.
Thank you. It's pretty much an, an annual event used as we certify our Class 1 through 3 roads in, in town, as well as the state highways and Class 4s. Um, we added, just for your information, uh, additional 975 feet of considered new highway, which is basically, uh, an area near Gaskell Road. So that was the only addition. Everything else remains the same from previous years. And all this, this information then helps us in, in terms of the money that we described for our, our municipal grant aid and other types of programs, as Stefan had also mentioned, where we can get federal dollars and other grants to help us, uh, maintain and upgrade our, our transportation infrastructure. So I just need a, a resolution to, uh, to basically certify the mileage, and then we'll send that back to the state.
Any questions on that? Anyone?
Well, let's move it. Uh, I move that we approve the highway mile...
Well, let's move it. I move that we approved the highway mileage certificate of highway mileage just presented.
Second.
We have a copy to sign here.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the certificate of highway mileage as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item, town report.
Thank you. We did get some comments. I think Peter had sent in some comments, so those will be incorporated into our final draft. I think the draft has been circulated. So at this point, we're at the point where we have to give a final copy to the printer to get it out for printing in order to have it back in time for our informational meeting, which is the 18th of February. So that's just sort of a timing issue and we don't have any additions except for some of the corrections I think that had been pointed out previously.
Yeah. So prior to, the first round of corrections and edits that I received from Peter and others made it into the version that went to the copier. Unfortunately, we had deadlines, so it already went to the copier. So Peter, I was going to actually call you tomorrow. We have, we received a PD, I'm sorry, a hard copy of, of version. And so per page changes, we have to pay. So we'll have to talk about what we want to incorporate for changes and, and what we feel like we can just leave at this point.
Are we going to show the expenses as I mentioned? I think it's.
If you'd like to, we'd have to pay for 500 copies for a change for each page. But we can discuss offline if you want.
Because I think it ought to be there. I've got a copy of last year's town report with me and 2019, it does show the budget for 2019 and expenses that were applied against that budget. And I think people are going to want to see that. I anticipate we're going to get a lot of questions on stuff that was, especially the 119.5 that was put in by the town meeting. And they're going to want to know what happened to that, but it's not showing up anywhere and nobody can look it up. And, and you still haven't given me an answer on the 33.5 interest payment in the cinema expenses.
Yeah, I haven't got there. We, as you guys know, it's full audit, town report, budget. We have lots of HR issues being handled at the moment. But the 33.5 is not affecting our bottom line either way. We, we will get answers to it. Right now, we're just in, I guess, you know, we're kind of triaging. So tomorrow, the report has to go back to the printer for, with final edits.
I would highly recommend that you get the expenses in there for 2020, along with the budget for 2020.
Okay, so we paid approximately $1,200 for the reports. It will, that estimation will be about $1,800 and changes.
Well, I think it's a matter of transparency at this point. I think they're going to want to see that, but.
So what, couldn't you simply answer where the, the 119?
Wait, to me?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, we kind of crossed paths there. Sorry. So I, clarify that again for me. So, so if we were to make changes now, it would cost how much in addition?
Well, if we're going to change every single budget page.
Yeah.
So it's per page, per copy. So there's 500 copies and the bulk of the entire report is budget. What we can do is put an insert into the report with actuals. The reason we left it out is we have not made adjusting audit entries yet. And I think that it would be very confusing. We had to bump up the deadline for the town report because of the informational meeting. So we're finishing audit right now and we'll make entries, but I just think it would be unfair.
When? When will the audit be ready?
In the next couple.
Before, before the 18th or no? Will, will, will we have a copy of it before the 18th?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I, Sue.
So can we just have people get the audit?
Well, that's absolutely.
That's.
Everyone's going to get the audit. That, that's the whole point. I didn't want the audit not to match the town report.
Okay. Things that 119 or whatever it was from, put in last year, that's for this current year that we're in. So Peter, you're saying you want expenses to date for this current year?
Now, if you, you go back to last year's town report, you'll see that there's got 1019 budget. And it also has the expenses applied against that budget. And then it's got 21 and 22 proposed. This budget just shows budget numbers for 19, 20, 21, and 22. No expenses shown anywhere. That's what's been put against that budget item.
We can put inserts into the town reports and we can also, they're also distributed audited financials. What I didn't want, and I thought would be far more confusing, is to have unaudited financial numbers in the town report that's handed out at the same time as the audit, which would be different.
But that's what you did that in 2019.
Right. Because that was what we have been doing going forward, but I don't think it's a good practice and going, if we weren't in a pandemic and we didn't have to have an informational meeting, the audit would be distributed before the town report.
Now, is there a timeline? We have to have a warning out for the informational meeting?
It's already out. It had to be out by last Friday.
Has anybody on this board received a copy of that warning?
It went out via the town clerk.
It's the same warning that you had.
Well, that's the warning.
Right.
But is there any notification that it is on the 18th?
It's on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure we hit the deadlines, you know.
Yes.
You guys signed the warning.
Yeah, it's on here, Peter. There's this.
You approved it.
That Thursday, the 18th.
So the plan, Shannon, is to make an insert with the expenses, perhaps a pie chart to break it down for people like last year.
Sure, we can do, do that, but also to have.
It would be an in, an insert so that it's accurate. And then, and, and if anyone has a question where the 119.5 is, there's a pretty simple answer.
Well, that's in this fiscal year and, which is not even, there's no today or actuals in this town report regarding this fiscal year.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect. Anything else, Peter?
Nope.
Anyone else? I think it looks great. And thank you all for your hard work to get it out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Susan, Ben, Stefan, any questions?
At this time, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda. I suppose we can discuss appointing a select board member to the Automated Vehicle Committee.
Sure. So if I could just give a little update before your, your discussion, I did hand out some information to the board. There is going to be a forum, which is basically a, is presented by VT Trans and some of the participants in the program, giving more detail about how the program will be run in Vermont, what the requirements are for permitting through the VT Trans process. And any other kinds of just general information. There'll be a video and some other items on that. That forum is coming up on the 8th of February. I'll be just on one of the panels, just as part of the conversation. The Chair of the Springfield Select Board, the Vice Chair rather, is going to participate in that, as you recall or might have seen recently in the news. Springfield is going to have a permit for testing. That select, they went through the select board there and they decided that they were going to go forward. I've asked VT Trans to have a follow-up meeting, to have a public information meeting some point in March to give additional information to this board, as well as anybody in the village who's interested prior to any kind of decision to go forward with a permit. So at this point, all we're looking to do on a committee is to look at all these inputs, engage the public, and at some point we'll come back to you with some type of resolution if we wanted to go forward. Somewhat in the form that I, that I have here as a draft that I gave you in this paperwork here. So we're in no means looking to get a decision tonight about actually issuing a permit. This is just continuing more information gathering, public discussion, and then at some point we'll come back to see how you would like to proceed.
What's the timeline that we're looking at then?
So talking with VT Trans, they would like to have a decision after we do the public meeting in March. Come back with, with, and if there's answers or questions that they'd like to answer sometime in April and have a decision sometime before May, so they could start potentially, is the weather's better to start doing some of this work potentially over the summer?
But I mean, what about a timeline for, for any of this committee that we need to pull together? I mean, I'm just thinking maybe it makes more sense to wait till we have a new select board. We'll have some turnover poss, well, we will have turnover in March. First week of March. Or is that too late to start a committee?
I think the, the committee itself, Susan, was the one looking to get a member. I, I understand that things are going to change soon, but to my memory was like they wanted to form a committee and that, I don't know if it's mandatory, but they wanted a select board member. So it seems that that's what they were waiting for to begin their discussion to whatever happens in Rockingham with this.
Right. So this is a, a V Trans committee or is this a committee of the town of Rockingham to look at this?
It'll, it'll, it'll be a, a V Trans member. It'll be myself. It'll be a, a member of trustees and a member from the select board and probably one or two people from the public as well.
Wasn't there a list where we already saw some people who were in it and then it was kind of just waiting for a select board member? And then to me.
Not that I, Paul.
I felt, I felt like I saw one, but I don't know, with the, with the development in Springfield, like when they came here, there was no other town that was even interested in entertaining it. Springfield had a meeting and accepted it and then front page news. So are they still super interested in pursuing Rockingham as well?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
They, they think that, you know, the more, the more areas that they can go and the more data they can gather, then the better off they can, they can determine how this, this program is viable or not viable, basically, as it goes forward.
Interesting.
And I'm sure they want adjacent town.
Well, it would certainly help, obviously, right? If they're working in Springfield and Rockingham and Bellas Falls, right? We all are in the general area, so I'm sure that would help as well.
It, it's interesting that Burlington, Winuski or, or Montpelier haven't stepped up to the plate. They would, you'd think with the traffic issues they have, they'd be one of the ones that'd be looking at this, but I guess maybe they're not interested.
Yeah, I don't know, Peter. I don't, I don't know if it's been, you know, talked about in other places. I really don't. I haven't seen a lot of other information about it, to be, to be honest.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, if, if anybody, I'll step up to the plate and tell you I'm interested. You know, we're back up to a six-day-a-week schedule up there, but you know, as long as I get hopefully enough notice in advance, I should be able to make it.
Oh, that's great.
Yep.
And again, we're not asking for a commitment or, or any kind of, you know, approvals at this point. It's more to gather information. Make sure we're reaching out and, and, you know, we want to be as informed as we can be before we go and do any type of resolution or any kind of, you know, decision. So we're still very early in the, in the process of really gathering information, making sure that we're all fully informed.
Any, any other?
Sorry, I nominate Stefan.
How about Stefan's out here in Mar, after March? He can still be on the committee? Okay, we have a nomination. Need a second. Ben, you got it? All right. Motion has been made and seconded to nominate Stefan Golick to the ABC Automated Autonomous Vehicle Committee. It's been seconded, huh? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Stefan Golick has been.
Have to appoint somebody else if we need a select board member and Stefan isn't selected, but we'll be okay with that later.
Yeah, you guys can figure that out should the time come. Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we need to review agenda items for our next meeting. February 16th.
I know one item that we'll have to move up.
We'll have to prepare for the 18th meeting, I guess.
Hold on, Sue. Scott was talking.
I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. Go ahead. You have, we'll, we'll take turns.
Yeah, the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust update, which is the BF Garage project.
Okay.
They've requested to come and present.
Do you want to save it for your records?
At the meeting of the 16th, so we won't do that. We'll probably have to move that one up because I guess there's some CDBG and some other public funds that they have to discuss with the select board. Not our money, but federal money. So I think that they'll probably be on the agenda for the 16th.
Susan? You have something? Is that what he just said?
No, I was just going to say we'll have to, we'll have to figure out, prepare how this informational meeting is. And I mean, how is it different from town meeting?
It really isn't significantly different from town meeting. This will prepare everyone for town meeting because it's going to be remote and this is the first time we're doing the, the entire thing via Australian ballot. It's just a time to allow people to ask us questions, log into the Zoom. If they have questions about Australian ballot and how that works. It should be a pretty brief informational meeting. And then, and, and we'll highlight kind of how, what the new town meeting will look like and that will be it.
Okay, so there'll be no real discussion about any of the warning items. Just information about how the town meeting will run this year.
That, that's the idea of it. However, it is the select board's meeting. So if you want to answer questions about the budget or about the warning, you can do so if you choose.
I think it should be kept to the, to the previous statements. It's, it's not time to discuss it. It's information for how that our business meeting will be run. I don't think we should get into detail.
Right.
If, if four people show up, they, they should all wait like everyone else. Simply informa-
And that's, yeah.
Informational. Yep.
Sorry, the, the Zoom lag here. Unless there's some specific information that maybe they will be helpful to people, like some of those charts and things we've had in the past. If someone comes up with a, an idea of how they, we can help explain things better. And that would give two weeks potentially to pull up that data for the town meeting. But other than that, you're right, just informational. I mean, I don't know, Shannon, how many of those things you're going to prepare? I mean, some of those pie charts and things were, those little fly, uh, handouts were helpful.
Yeah.
At meetings past, but I don't know with the audit going on, if you have time to deal with that.
Absolutely. So those will be ready at our informational meeting with audit, town report and the handouts. And then they'll be ready again for town meeting. So they will be there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will have them to the select board ahead of time with some formal write-up so that you guys can answer any questions that are asked of you.
Excellent. Anything else? That's, that's, anything else for that meeting? Well, not right now. And then our next review items for. not right now. And then our next review items for the next joint boarding, joint board meeting, which we're not sure when that will be.
I think it's late March.
Wyndham.
Right? I think it's the, I'll double check the date.
Usually quarterly, so somewhere in March.
Yeah.
Have one item on there, the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust update. Where, where they gonna?
I think we're going to move them to the 16th because I think there's some public money that they have to discuss with us on the garage project and a change in the scope, so.
They're having something on, on Zoom tomorrow or something, the 4th, I think it is.
It's an ongoing process.
Yeah, Thursday.
Yes.
At noon time, so if anybody's interested, they can watch it, join in.
Yeah. These will be more specific to town, you know, impacts for us directly. So we'll make sure that it's well publicized ahead of time.
Okay, we need to review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
So moved, seconded.
Motion been made, seconded to review and approve orders, bills and warrants. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Other business. Susan, we'll start with you. No, you're frozen.
I'm all set. Thank you. Other than thank the town crew, they did a great job.
I will pass that on. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yep.
Yep, okay.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, nothing. I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Stefan?
We're good, Mr. Chairman.
Peter?
Do we know what happened with the tax issue in Westminster for the recycling center? Got emails on that. People ask and I have no answer.
Okay, back to, I'll, I'll respond to the board via email.
Do we have an update on where we stand with one center?
I will have the attorney is going to review the, I've done the draft of the findings and the conclusions. I just want their input and then I should issue it hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay, is all the people that had affidavits going to get a copy of that so they know?
We could certainly do that. We're not required, but I think it's probably a nice thing to do since they.
I was just thinking that they're going to, they might want to know where we stand. I've already had a couple of.
I'm sure they're going to want some follow-up, so we might as well send it to them.
Comment because it was working.
Yeah, I think it makes some sense.
And I noticed this morning, 121 coming in this morning, somebody got the guard rail by Fred Bullock's. Took that right off. It's over and the left-hand side of the road now, it's on the field side.
Okay.
I'm sure Andy's aware of it.
Yeah. A few people sliding around.
Anything else?
Nope.
I would like to just question again the status of the, so when we sign all these agreements with Green Mountain Power to replace power poles and in the agreement, we've always stated that they remove the old one. I think Wade Misher recently asked about the big piles of dirt. I've had some residents ask me about certain poles that have been there for a really long time, so. Just maybe you could give the public the, a response to what the holdup is and are they ever going to remove? Why are we signing an agreement with them if they're not holding up to removing the pole?
They're difficult to work with in relationship to their responsibility to other utilities, right? So every time they, they have a pole and they have a, a multiple utilities on that pole, everybody has to get off in order for them to then remove the old pole. And, and quite frankly, they're not real, once their particular portion is moved, they're not real good about following through with the other people that are on that pole. I, I reached out to a couple of people at Green Mountain. I reached out to some other folks, Consolidated, because they want to come back to us with some issues about some upgrades to their system. So we're going to start that conversation before we start getting any further along with this mess. I'd like them to clean up the mess that's already there. So I'm hoping that we can use some leverage here and get some, get some movement because I've got a pretty long list of places that they need to go and, and resolve. So your frustration is my frustration. Hopefully we can use a little leverage here and get some, get some action.
Excellent. I, I think it's, it's not, I don't have one in, in front of my house. It's, it's a lot of other people's frustration, so it's good to hear an answer. And the, the part about everyone's utilities, different companies on that same pole kind of makes sense to me. It's, can't put all the blame on them, but.
But since Green Mountain owns the pole, it's their responsibility to, to do that transfer and ultimately then remove that old pole, so.
Because it, since I've been here, we've, we've added the, make sure they remove the pole at the time of, right?
Well, yeah, I think.
It was signed.
Within a year, I thought it was.
Yeah, right. We've given them time, but believe me, some of these are, are well past.
Yeah.
Well past that, that period, so.
Okay, excellent. So no need for executive session. Entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you and good night.